Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We are really pleased that you're all here with us this evening. I'm particularly pleased to note the presence this evening of a number of school officials. Superintendent Scrooge is with us tonight, Board President Stewart, and board members, I'm sorry, Jill Carr and Paul Walker with us this evening. We are really thankful that you're here tonight, and we're thankful for everything that you do for our community. Okay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbaugh.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes of the meeting that was held on September 19th, 2019 were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we have correspondence this evening.
Yes, I have a few items distributed to you prior to the meeting was the financial budget summary report for the month of September of 2019. And also distributed to you prior to the meeting were was a listing of budget transfers for the month of October, and those require your approval.
Thank you. Kay, is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
And the last thing I have are some appointments and reappointments for city board and commission. And all of these appointments will be effective immediately. In order to ensure proper staggering of terms, two community members will serve two-year terms, and with the two other community members serving four-year terms. Subsequent appointments to the seats will be full four-year terms. And the ex officio members of the commission, this is for sidewalk commission, will be Mike Hammer, Lori Treter, and John Zanfordino as a representative from the Transportation and Safety Committee of City Council. The new appointments are, and all of these are for the sidewalk commission, Brian Sanner for a two-year term, Lori Young, two-year term, Richard Martin for a four-year term, and Cynthia Whipple for a four-year term. And those require your approval.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
The move that we approve the appointments with glee.
Second.
The move then seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The appointments are approved as committed. And as always, I would like to say thank you for these members of our community who have agreed to serve on this very important board and commission. We do appreciate your service.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. Mr. Mayor, special recognitions this evening.
Mr. President, members of council and all assembled, I do have one special recognition tonight, but I must ask because I'm not sure, is there someone here representing First Presbyterian Church other than Jan Larson-McLaughlin? Well, I was, we were requested many weeks ago to do a proclamation in honor of Crop Hunger Walk Day, which we are declaring for October 20th. And this has been going on for a number of years. It's the Christian Rural Overseas Crop Program began in 1947, and it's the Church World Service and so forth. It's been big in the last 15 years. Crop Hunger Walks have raised over $200 million to help and hope to people in need around the world and U.S. and so forth. So we'll make sure that, or maybe Jan, you can be the messenger. But in any event, we'll make sure, because this is an annual event, and it's very important. I know many of us look forward to it and participate in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to lobby visitation, Kay, has anyone registered for lobby visitation?
We have no one this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Proceeding then to the introduction of new legislation.
Me to go first, okay? From the Parks and Rec Commission or Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to execute an assignment and assumption agreement and other documents related to the transfer, purchase of property from the Black Swamp Conservancy.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I have an ordinance from the Finance Committee, an ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.23B and E, the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding medical, dental, and vision insurance. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019.
Thank you, Bruce. I have one resolution from the committee of the whole. This is a resolution in support of the Bowling Green City Schools' income tax and bond issue in the schools generally. Now moving to our official reports, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of council and all assembled, I do not have a report for you this evening, but I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. I do want to thank you very much for your approving the appointments to the sidewalk commission. I know Bill, this is something you've been long looking forward to, and it was one of those curiosities when I became mayor. I asked about the commission, and we, the well was dry, and so it had to be postponed for much longer than a lot of us would have, would prefer. But in any event, thanks to you all, it's been reactivated. It's, and we look forward to good things to come, and like you, I'm very grateful to the various citizens that stepped forward. Two of them, they were served before, and they still have good memories of it and are willing to serve again. So I think it's something very, very important. We appreciate it. But should you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Other questions for Mayor Edwards?
Not a question, but just a thank. I really appreciate it that you fast tracked it and got it through.
Well, everyone, it's a process.
Thank you very much.
And the money is the most important aspect of it. And the 50-50 program has really been working well, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treter.
Good evening. Public Works Director Kraft is not here this evening, so I've kind of incorporated his report into mine, and I will take any questions for either of us at the end here. Offering a quick update on our downtown construction, we are still on track for that final course of paving to be done in the middle of this month. I do not have exact dates as of yet, but the plan is to be substantially complete with the project by the end of October. Note that with any construction project, there are often punch list items, so it doesn't mean that every cone will be out of the downtown, but substantial completion is good news to all of our ears, certainly. And also in October are the Firefly Nights, which we are very excited about. Will be on October 18th in the downtown. They have numerous activities planned throughout the main street where that festival will be held, and we hope that the community can come out and support that. The city will be providing various services to help with the road closures and facilitate that event. We are in the middle of collecting names for brush collection. People can call in to Public Works until October 14th. And new this month, we have created an online form, so people can go to the city's website and click on the online form and submit their addresses. Just as a reminder, the reason that we do the scheduling really is a sustainability effort. If we don't have to drive the streets looking for brush, we can target our routes, we can be efficient, we can be effective, we can go to those places that have brush, pick it up, and move on to the various other activities that are required of Public Works. The Tree Commission is going to be having a seminar on October 19th at Simpson talking about winterizing your garden. And the last thing to note is our Fire Division, in recognition of Fire Prevention Month, will be having an open house at the Pearl Street Station on October 12th from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. Last year, they started a new activity, they did a live burn, they did a demonstration there. They're going to do that again this year, this year with Christmas trees, to show you the difference between a live tree and artificial tree. So that is a really interesting process to watch. Fire prevention is something that is important to everyone, but of course, we also open up the trucks and have the firefighters there, so it's a great activity for families of all ages, and we hope you can join us. That completes my report, subject to your questions.
Other questions for Lori?
It's not really a question. I'm, see that Joe's not here, but would you relay for me, I was going door to door the other day, and this gal answered the door, and she goes, you know, I had a deer die in my backyard, and it was like over 100 pounds, and I resisted the temptation to say, well, that's a lot of dough. But anyway, she, I resisted. And so she's, she was saying, well, you know, I called the non-emergency police number, and then they sent me to so-and-so and so-and-so. So she went through and checked all the boxes, and then finally she had called the municipal administrator office and talked to a charming man. And I go, Joe Fawcett? And she goes, yes, he did such a great job helping me, so I just want to relay to you. And it did, she ended up having to pay like $100 to have it hauled away, which, again, that's a lot of dough. But the point is, Joe, he was her hero. Please relay that to him.
I will certainly pass along. Thank you.
Natural causes, I imagine?
Uh, yes, yes. And way too much for her to drag it to the street and just, you know.
Very good. Thank you, Lori.
Thanks.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Other questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley. Questions for Kristen? Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
Seven years and nine months, I work on him to have no report. He finally has no report, and I have one. Who would have guessed? Council knows this, but people in the audience may not. If you looked at the agenda, you'll see that ordinances, I think I have the numbers right, 8784 and 8785 are not on the agenda anymore. That's because Marsh goofed up, and the effect of tabling those ordinances indefinitely and then passing on them for, I think it was the next meeting, caused those ordinances to be no more. That doesn't mean the issue is dead. They can be reintroduced, but they'll have to be renumbered and reintroduced if and when you decide you want to take it up again. I don't think the state has moved that possible piece of legislation yet in the House, and who knows if they will. But right now, that's, that's still where it was. Just as a matter of future practice, I think it's, in my opinion, if we table any legislation to a date certain, that we are amending Robert's Rules, which is authorized, and that's okay. But if it's the intention to table something indefinitely, I don't think that's, that is something that's authorized under Robert's Rules. And according to our administrative code, I think it's 31.35, I believe, Robert's Rules, unless modified by majority vote by you, is what we have to follow for all that kind of protocol. So that was my fault, I didn't catch it. For anybody that's watching out there and is worried that there's some sort of underhanded effort up here or something, these folks didn't know it, and I really didn't know it either, or I would have called it to everybody's attention. Any questions about that?
Just out of curiosity, Mike, the historical preservation ordinance was tabled for quite a while, so I guess that should not have been since we didn't have a specific date attached to it?
Yeah.
I mean, again, just curiosity.
Yeah, but, and we looked at this, Ryan and my office and I spent better part of two weeks looking back, 31 years, and actually, that thing kept moving to dates certain.
Oh, it did? Yeah, we kept on.
It's probably pure luck, but in 31 and a half years, we haven't passed any legislation that had been tabled indefinitely for more than one meeting.
Mike, I'd like to take part of the blame for that. I should have been more familiar with the rules. I moved to table it. More importantly, I probably should have talked to you about it before, before I chose to go this route. Kind of decided fairly quickly, but so you don't get to take all the blame for that.
I should know that, though. I should have known it, so. But fortunately, all your options are still available if you decide to move forward with, or with either one of them, for that matter, it's two.
So do we have to do something tonight?
No.
No.
No, no. I would say you might as well continue to wait. I think that was your intention, to wait and see what the legislature does. These kind of pieces of legislation tend to come up down there in December, so I suspect it'll be one of those year-end kind of things, if it happens at all. Last year, same thing had been introduced and died in December, so who knows?
So this means the tabling of the Sustainability Committee also?
Correct.
Yeah. I think that was '84.
But we can vote to amend Robert's Rules of Orders so that we can, in the future, do things the way we've done things in the past.
Sure. And that's what I've said. I think that's what you're doing when you table, do a date certain, and you vote, because Robert's Rules does say they can be modified by majority vote. So I say that's what you've been doing on those occasions when you table, do a date certain, yeah.
Well, if I understood you correctly, we don't have to change Robert's Rules of Orders. Every, it'll be a case by case. So if we vote to table a motion to a date certain, we are in fact-
You're amending the rules.
-amending the rules. So we don't have to amend the rules per se.
Right. But if we changed our procedure so that we could leave things on the table indefinitely, that would require it-
We won't have to. When the city attorney's done, I may offer something here.
Yeah, there's a way, I think, to do that, not tabling it, but there is a way to postpone according to Robert's Rules, yeah.
I'll show you here in a moment.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
So, Mr. President, let me, let me just build on that, because after reading the city attorney's comments about how we can table to a date certain, I took another look at Robert's Rules of Orders. Let me pass this out. You might have seen this already, but in an email format, just pass it. So in essence, you know, Robert's Rules allows for laying something on the table, which is what we've been doing. It's a perfectly good procedure. It's handy. We use it all the time, especially with public hearings and zoning issues, because we never go beyond the limit of the next, the end of the next meeting. And we're using it the way it was, it is intended to be used. Additionally, point number two, as, as Mike said, we can table to a date certain without a problem. He's clarified that. So moving forward, we can do that. What I also discovered in a review of Robert's Rules of Orders is there is a procedure called postpone indefinitely. It's, it's a little different in its, in the way it operates, but the net result is that we, you can postpone a motion to any indefinitely except for the current meeting. So once, once you postpone it, you can't act on it at that same meeting, but you can at any time in the future. The only difference between that, the other difference between that and laying something on the table procedurally, is that it's debatable. But so, so now, if you look at these three things, we have three ways to move. We can do the normal lay on the table. Again, that's very helpful when we're doing public hearings, because we don't need time beyond the next meeting. And we've been doing that properly for decades. And then, so, in any case, I hope this, this little guideline helps clarify the procedures that we can, it allows us to do anything we want. This is just how we do anything we want. These are the way the Robert's Rules of Procedure tells us how to do it. We're not limited in any way. We just have to use the right language.
Thank you, Greg. Yeah, thanks, Greg. I appreciate that. We'll get with Kay, and we will revise the little cheat sheet that all of us have and often keep in front of us in terms of process and processing legislation, and we'll get that revision made. It's very minor, and I really don't think that it's probably going to come into play very frequently, but we'll get that out to you as quickly as we can. Thank you all. Mike, thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd like to just reiterate that the point of tabling it in the first place was to, not to stop the ordinances from going forward, but to give businesses and other people that are going to be affected by such a change, give them a chance to see if this is even going to fly. And so if we had gone forward with it, people might start making changes, and then if the state said we could not enforce this ban, then people would have done a lot of work for nothing. We were not going to put the ban in effect till a year later, over a year later, so it just seemed that the point was to not burden people with something until we were sure it could go forward.
Thanks, Bruce. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Other questions for Brian?
I appreciate all of you picking up the slack of Mike having a report by not having one.
Decades worth. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
We, the committee, the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, had two public hearings on ordinances 8792 and 8793. Prior to this meeting, there were no public comments on either, and the committee unanimous in supporting both.
Very good. Thank you. Additional council committee reports. Seeing none, I will ask Kay to read us through the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3743 for first reading. Resolution in support of the Bowling Green City Schools' income tax and bond issue and the schools generally.
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3743 at second and third reading.
Second.
The move then seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
No.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3743.
Resolution number 3743 for second and third reading. Resolution in support of the Bowling Green City Schools' income tax and bond issue and the schools generally.
I move to adopt Resolution 3743.
Second.
The move then seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm extremely happy to see this resolution before us tonight. I think the school levy is urgent for the city of Bowling Green, and I'm happy to cast a vote in support of that.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. President, it is important for economic development that we have high-quality schools, and more important than that is that it's important for kids to have a good place to go and learn and have a good experience.
Thank you, Bruce.
I will add to what the others have said. I certainly agree, it's a major economic development issue. I also think it's very important that we take into consideration the safety of our children, and I'm very pleased that our chief of police, Tony Hetrick, has issued a letter that was a request of the board of the Bowling Green School District to look at the safety issues of having three elementary schools versus one consolidated school on the campus of the middle school and high school. And Mr. Hetrick did issue his opinion, and he was supportive of one consolidated school on safety issues. It was a two-page opinion, very well thought out, very well investigated, and so that's another good reason to support this particular effort on the levy and not to hold it off for late run.
Thank you, Sandy.
Mr. President.
Robinette.
Yes, with this resolution, I believe that this city council has clearly identified the core issue and why it's important for city council to make this statement. And the title hints at it, the title, a resolution in support of Bowling Green City Schools' income tax and bond levy and schools generally. But the core issue, to me, is clearly identified in the first sentence of the resolution, that we continue our efforts to create and maintain a sustainable economic development strategy. We, this council, further recognize that one of the key components of a sustainable economic development strategy is to attract more people to live in Bowling Green and the immediate surrounding area, and that we further recognize that businesses move to or choose to grow in places where the employees prefer to live. And we get it. We understand that quality schools, which include all public, religious, and other non-public schools, are important, an important factor for employees and their families when deciding where to live, and we therefore greatly appreciate the value that Bowling Green City Schools, St. Alewitsch's Catholic Elementary and Junior High School, the Bowling Green Christian Academy, Bowling Green Montessori School, and the Sleek Academy all bring to our community. So I'm pleased that we are formally recognizing that it is indeed vitally important that Bowling Green City Government, the city schools, the religious, the non-public schools, everyone work cooperatively together to market our community. And the ongoing efforts of this council to update and improve our zoning code to attract development in the form of new housing and businesses, to make it easier for current businesses to grow, to make our city more walkable and bikeable, to improve aesthetics in the form of residential parking limits, to incentivize public art, and to make improvements such as that required in ordinance 8793, for which we'll vote tonight, are the building blocks of economic development. And strong, technically, current schools are part of the very important foundation upon which these building blocks of economic development can be stacked to form a cohesive, strategic economic development plan. As we state in the fifth and final clause of this resolution, investing in public education is particularly crucial to ensuring the future health of our economy and the competitiveness of our community. Students must leave our schools ready for success in the future and ready to fill current and future jobs, and public investment in education is necessary to equip schools with the resources, personnel, facilities, and technology to position students to acquire the skills and knowledge needed for college and career success. I'm proud to support the efforts of all the schools in Bowling Green, and I'm proud to support this, the Bowling Green City Schools with my signature on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I will say that I'm not sure that I can say it any better than Greg just did. He touched on a number of the different key components of the resolution. I have been an outspoken proponent of this bond levy request, and I will continue to be so until Election Day. I'm very much appreciative of the efforts of our Board of Education and various school leaders, and the process that they went through to listen to the members of our community come up with a plan that is going to best meet, first of all, I believe, the educational requirements of our children. I think that all of us at some point have to step back and recognize the fact that many of us, most of us, are not educational experts. That's what we hire these folks for, and that's why we elect them. So I'm at the point where I certainly recognize all of the benefits to our community in terms of economic development, and recognize the importance from that aspect, but there's also part of me that is just willing to accept the opinions of the educational experts in our community and what they think is the best way to educate our children. So I'm perfectly comfortable endorsing this request, and I'm going to encourage everyone that I know to do the same. And also, I just think it's very safe, or very important that at this point in time, that our community makes, that if this passes, that our community will be making a very strong statement about how we value education in our community. Bowling Green has a long history of supporting our city schools, and the last two efforts that were unsuccessful, really, I don't believe are representative of our community's commitment to educating the young people in our community. I've heard people in other communities say, what the heck's going on in Bowling Green? You guys always used to be behind your schools. I think it's time to erase any notion in our own community and any others that we don't recognize and we don't support the education of our young people in our community. So I also think that that's a very, very strong reason to vote for this request. Are there other comments?
I have a few. My position two years ago, and my position now, is that it's- I have a few. My position two years ago, and my position now, is that it's inappropriate for a city council to take a stand on the school levies. And I'm comfortable with that, but I'm in a bit of a middle position in the sense that it's a lot like, if you've ever taken a survey, and the survey has a question, and it's a yes/no question, it's mandatory, and there's no, not applicable. When you come to that question, it's like, "Well, I won't answer it, but it's mandatory, so you have to make a choice." For me, what I've seen here with this council, and particularly with Mike's leadership, is there were earlier drafts of this particular resolution, and Mike took it upon himself to try and craft legislation that would be acceptable to everybody. And I think that is commendable. And it has not escaped my notice that if you, if you look at Mike's comments, he had no notes. That's straight from the heart. That's not easy to do. And so I'm very impressed with the effort that Mike put forth. And in comparison to the earlier version, well, actually, in both versions, there's something here that normally would, it would get my vote just because of it. I have noticed pockets at times in this community where there's been an us/them kind of a environment, where if you send your kids or part of your family to the public school, and somebody else sends their kids to St. Al's or Montessori or Bowling Green Christian Academy, well, then you're not part of the community. And what we need in this community, and I've seen evidence of it as I've gone door-to-door, it's very encouraging, is a sense of community. The slogan that's being used is "Masterful", "One Community." We need to be one community. And so this part, and Greg read it, but I think it's worthy of repeating, whereas Bowling Green City Council believes that quality schools, including public, religious, and other non-public schools, are an important factor. And then it lists the schools. I've long said that Bowling Green City Schools is a mosaic made up of the St. Al's, Bowling Green Christian Academy, Montessori, homeschooling even. And it's encouraging to me. There's times when, being a council member, that you're frustrated, but this is encouraging to me that we've made the step and that council's making the step to say, "No, it's not just about Bowling Green Public Schools. Bowling Green Public Schools is a vital component of Bowling Green City Schools. You cannot have a healthy Bowling Green City School system without a healthy public school system." So I'm back to my dilemma. And the dilemma is, although I think it's inappropriate, there's a lot of very wise people on this council that are wholeheartedly not thinking that it's inappropriate. And the way that this wording has changed, it's, section one and two and section three says it'll be the earliest time permitted by law. Section one says that the Bowling Green City Council supports the Bowling Green City Schools' Board of Education, that's my emphasis, "in its effort to pass the November 5, 2019, School Income Tax and Bond Issue for the Benefit of Our Children." The way that I've seen the bond issues and going door-to-door, it's becoming more and more of a hot issue, as expected, is there's some things I want to encourage people on. One, and there's 30, no, I'm kidding, there's five. Recognize that the school board is not the enemy. There've been some people, when I've gone to the doors, that's what they've looked at, and that couldn't be further from the truth. Their responsibility, the school board's responsibility, was to learn from the previous two attempts and ascertain what they thought was the best path forward. They did that. I've been to meetings. They did beyond due diligence. They had the task forces, they listened to the task forces, which were made up of very good people, and wrestled with this, and then came up with, "Well, what is best for the kids?" The school board did their job. They should be respected. Also, the citizens are not an obstacle to be overcome. The citizens are the ultimate decision-makers. They are to be respected. And for those that say, "I saw a sign the other day," it was, there's a lot of different signs out there, that was, "I voted no the last two times, I'm voting no now," or something like that. And it's like, no, it's not the same levy. So it's apples and oranges. And so one other point, I'm going to skip one for the interest of time. The status quo is unacceptable. If, when people go to vote, it's a vote between what the school board reasonably put together, or whatever unknown alternative there will be in the future. And if you were at the Legal Women Voters Forum last night, bless you, there's, it's not written in stone what would happen next. So the status quo is unacceptable. If any voter is wondering about that, it can't be done. We can't have that in this community. So back to my dilemma, and that is, this resolution is crafted very well. If I vote no, then the message is, "Oh, he's against the levy." Well, it's not, if I think it's inappropriate, and I vote no, it's not that I'm for or against the levy, but that's the message. If I vote yes, then, "Oh, well, he's for the levy." Well, for me, either way, it's not going to necessarily be an accurate portrayal, especially in the October before an election. So what I want to say is, I have to choose one or the other. I think it's inappropriate, but I lean very heavily and respect the school board. I respect my colleagues on council, and with the understanding that my emphasis is that the Bowling Green City Council supports the Bowling Green City School Board of Education in its effort. We support the board in their responsible effort. And then, section two, so that's the board, section two, that the Bowling Green City Council urges all voters throughout the city to participate, well done, in the upcoming November 5, 2019. That's what we have. The board did its job, fulfilled its responsibility, and now it's up to the citizens to decide, "What kind of a city do you want?" And so when it comes time for me to vote, please bear in mind all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any additional discussion?
I would just like to say, my grandfather was president of a school board of a small school not too far from here that has since been consolidated. And in his capacity as a school board president, he said, "Never vote against a school levy, because they're just going to put it on the ballot again, and they wouldn't ask for the money if they didn't need it." I don't usually like to share my voting record on things, because I think it's nobody's business, but I cast my first vote at age 18 in 1983 at Crim Elementary School. And in all of the years since then, I have never voted against a school. And I don't see that happening this time.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 3743 is adopted. Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to pass this down and have y'all sign it so that I don't have to try to catch it at the end of the meeting, so.
And in black ink, right?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
It's not going to be framed, so I'll be lenient. Ordinance number 8799 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers?
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8799 at second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8799 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8800 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 33.23B and E of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding medical, dental, and vision insurance.
Mr. President?
There wasn't anything in the legislative report about number of readings. Did you have a...
Ordinance number 8801 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to execute an assignment and assumption agreement and other documents related to the transfer, purchase of property from the Black Swamp Conservancy. Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3742 for second reading. Resolution authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a renewal of the agreement with the Wood County Public Defender. Ordinance number 8797 for second reading. Ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, for in-lot number 2801 and in-lot number 2802, generally located at the northwest corner of North Enterprise Street and Frazee Avenue, from M2 General Industrial to R2 Single Family Residential Zoning, as petitioned for by Maur Rentals LLC. Legislation for third reading. Ordinance number 8796 for third reading. Ordinance determining certain real properties no longer necessary for municipal purposes, and authorizing the municipal administrator to transfer said properties to the Bowling Green City School District Board of Education.
I move to adopt ordinance 8796.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8796 is adopted.
Then ordinances 8792 and 8793 come off the table automatically.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinett?
I have two ordinances, one from the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, and I move to, move to adopt ordinance 8792.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8792 is adopted.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinett?
I move to adopt ordinance 8793.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8793. This is a matter of housekeeping. As per the discussion with Mr. Marsh and Mr. Robinett earlier, the tabled ordinances that are appearing on our agenda this evening will not be listed on the agenda for our next meeting.
That's-
Great. Thank you, Kay. Is there any other business to come before council?
I just wanted to double-check that we're having two public hearings on Monday, October 21st?
We have the Finance Committee at 6:00.
Great.
And then at 6:45, a public hearing for ordinance number 8797.
Yeah, just the one.
Thank you, Kay.
Right.
Yes.
One after the committee meeting.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Been seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Excuse me, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
It's almost virtually identical to the one we passed.